Good, alrighty. Thank you, it's six o'clock. Thank you for coming to our regularly scheduled city council meeting. It is six, we do have a quorum, so I'll call us to order. Our first item will be, our invocation will be given by Steve Edwards. He is the Minister of Senior Adults, Missions and Administration at Central Baptist Church. So Steve, if you'll come and invitate for us, and then if you'll rise, after that, we'll say the pledges.
Thank you. God, we are so thankful that we have a place like Jacksonville to live in and to work and to be friends and neighbors with, and Lord, I pray for this meeting tonight. I pray that you give the council wisdom. I pray that you will help them to be attentive to the needs that are presented. And God, we thank you that we can do it in a way that will honor you. So we pray for your guidance tonight and everything that's done and said in Jesus' name. Amen.
In your majesty. You'll join me with the pledges first to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to God and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
Pledge. Our next item of business is a special presentation, our Business of the Month will be presented by JEDCO President Shane Pace. So Mr. Shane, if you'd come forward.
Mayor, council members. This month, we are honoring Evy Halliday here, local Realtor group here in Jacksonville, Texas. And so I'd like to ask Brenda and all the folks from Evy to come up if you don't mind. So as they're walking up, I'll tell a little story. In my line of business, having a great relationship with local Realtors and local brokers is extremely important. You know, knowing what properties are available, knowing that we're competitive in the market, and really just, they just have their finger on the pulse, and it helps me as I try to bring, you know, folks to Jacksonville. And that's what my job is, and that's exactly what their job is, to, you know, serve the community that's here today, but also try to bring folks here to Jacksonville for the future. I've worked with them on residential projects. Brenda actually sold me my house, and so she was a great resource as we went through that process. Worked with John on some commercial properties and a lot of other folks that aren't here in the room tonight, on their staff. And I just think that having them here in Jacksonville has been a huge blessing for all of us here. They've been in business for over 26 years. They have 13 professional Realtors on staff. They do a lot of great things for the community. This last year, they did a, tell me what it's called, it was the Fur...
Homes for Pets.
Homes for Pets. And luckily, they had already closed up shop by the time my wife and I drove by that. But the animal shelter was still open, so we ended up getting a dog that night. All that to say, they do a lot of great things. They raised about $2,500 for the animal shelter, and it's, again, their commitment to Jacksonville, their commitment to the folks who live here and work here. And we just want to say thank you for doing all that you do. And Brenda, if there's anything you guys would like to say, you're more than welcome to.
Well, thank you. We're very honored to have get this in order. And I will introduce everyone. So, okay, so this is Melanie Baker, Vicky Lau. Well, Melanie's our sales leader. Our office administrator is Kelly. She keeps us in line. Y'all all know John and Laura. And Max Riley, he is about to be a new sign agent. Chris Taylor-Taker, and Tonya Sand.
We love Jacksonville.
We do.
And that means we love the people.
Yes, absolutely. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside time to hear concerns from our citizenry. It's not designed to be a dialogue with the council. We actually can't enter into discussion with you if there's something that you want further information about. We can do that after the meeting, or you've got our phone numbers, we can meet with you tomorrow. We would like to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. By the way, we can all get out of here in a decent hour. But we have three that have turned in, wanted to speak, and I'll just take them in the order that they were turned in. Our first is Scott Brewer. So if you'll, yes, sir, thank you. If you'll come forward, state your name and address, and then just tell us what's on your heart. In three minutes.
Scott Brewer, I live at 2641 Lake Shore Drive. Bought my house from Vicky Lau, who was just here.
That's good.
First of all, let me say I love my town of Jacksonville. I can appreciate so much the invocation and the salutation to the flag that's not allowed in California anymore. Thirty-eight years I worked on the Southern California Gas Company Pipeline. Last 15, I was in charge of incident commander for major gas leaks and explosions. Moved here two days after I retired and bought the house one day after that. Partly because of the sign that showed the people at the lake having a great time. Really sold me on it. Unfortunately, here we go. Last couple of years, it's descended straight downhill to the point where now it looks like an episode of Mad Max over there every weekend. It's, I have a front row seat, I'm 50 yards from the parking lot, and my side porch is right there, so I get a front row seat. To the drug dealing, exhibition of speed, alcohol consumption, fistfights. It's really gotten out of control. The excess trash, I put a post yesterday that inflamed some people. Some people are pointing the finger at the city council, wow, they shouldn't have sold that other end. To me, that's no excuse. So it's okay for that stuff to have been going on at the other end, but not down here. I'm deathly afraid that somebody's going to get hurt, especially a child. I'm also on the Lake Jacksonville Committee. We put a help, my neighbor put out the free vests, all of which are gone by Monday. We put out a whole fresh set, they're all gone by Monday. Now, am I out of pocket on those? I am not. But they have been donated, and I'm sure the people that were kind enough to donate those things for such a good cause would not be thrilled to find out they lasted one day. They may not be so quick to volunteer the next year. I don't know what can be done about the situation. Brandon Worley, Johnny on the spot. Anytime I need him out there, he's got that area, his people have it cleaned up within an hour on any given Sunday and/or Monday, which is wonderful. But it doesn't take away from what's gone on for the 48 hours before. Many people I talked to around town have ceased to bring their families to the beach. They don't feel safe there anymore. It's been overtaken by young teens and 20s, ton of alcohol consumption, loud music, filthy language coming out from the loud music, things of that nature. I don't know what the answer is, I'm just posing a question. I thank you guys for your time.
You bet, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Our next one is Thomas Payne. Would you like to come? If you'll give us your name and address for the record, and then tell us what's your...
I'm Thomas Payne. I live at 2205 Bass Hall Circle, Jacksonville here. And my issue here is just one that I wanted to say something about, an experience that I had. The other day, when the lake was full and the water was kind of lapping up against my boathouse, I found a boat out there running around, and I thought the lake was closed. So I called up to find out, you know, who's in charge of lake closure and what's going on. Well, I found out there's very little information that you can gather. I called even the police department, and they didn't know whether or not the lake was closed. When I finally got to where the control was, there was little control. Nobody has any good idea of, well, when is it going to be closed? What circumstances come up to bring it to close? What length of time should it be closed? What circumstances should after allow it to come out? And the worst thing that I found was that even though it's closed, there's no punishment for violating that. It appears to be just whatever people want to do, they just go out and do it. Another big issue that I have about the things that are going on is that now that new boats are out, they have these things called wake boats that create huge wakes, which they surf behind these boats. And wakes within excess of three feet are created by these boats, and it's destroying our property. That's, you know, that's the city property. I say our property, we lease that from the city, and those boats are destroying my lake property, city lake property. So I'd like to see the city take an issue on something in that particular area to stop their property from being washed into the lake. My third thing that I'd like to talk about is the pollution that's going into the lake from all of this rain we're having. And I think there's a huge issue of nobody's getting informed about how the quality of the lake water is for people to swim in it. I don't swim in it anymore, but I have grandchildren that do. And, you know, there's not an easy way for anyone to find out, how good is that water? Is the water quality, can we swim in it? Or is there something in it that rolled in from the street? Are the animals and farms and things that, peashrew creeks and whatever, make it into the lake? Like to see that the city maybe takes a look at that and see if they can come up with some kind of published quality thing, green light or something we get from somewhere that everybody could get to easy on the webpage. Final thing is just a little bit about the webpage. It's very difficult to find out any kind of instant information there. There is no mechanism on the webpage that I can see that tells us, these are immediate notices that are being published or that we're putting out, and you can't find them. There may be, people tell me about Facebook, but I'm just not a Facebook person. So if it's on Facebook, I probably won't see it, and probably...
Plenty of people like me, thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Our third is Mary Therkew. Is that correct? Thank you. If you'll state your name and your address.
Mary Therkew, 529 North Ragstown. Yes, I was here last month talking about the trees and the weeds in front of my house. But I haven't, no one has got in touch with me concerning that. So I would like for someone to come up and at least look at it and tell me if they're going to cut it down or what.
We have your address.
Thank you.
Same address, Randy?
Thank you.
I have a phone number, so...
529 North Ragstown.
Thank you. That's all that had signed up. Is anybody else that wants to address the council that didn't sign up? Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't know there was a sign up.
That's okay. We're flexible.
I'm in Chatlin, I'm down at 1302 Jacksonville Square Drive, here in Jacksonville. I got some information from the paper that there was a possibility that you all were going to award a contract to proceed with the building of the boat ramp from the Texas Parks and Wildlife grant money. Is that going to take place tonight?
Item 12 on the agenda is related to that project.
It is on the agenda? That's good, because I have here a Cherokee and Herald article from June 17, 2020, four years ago, talking about the grant money and all the wonderful things that were going to be done. Nothing's been done yet. I was just about giving up hope. But if you all are going to award a contract, I will be so happy. I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll go to our next item, is our consent agenda. This is items under the consent agenda, required little or no deliberation by the council. Approval of the minutes, well, there's three reappointments there to the JEDCO board. We've got three tax refunds to be submitted based on the Cherokee County President District recommendation, and then approve a street, so. I will entertain a motion on that consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Galluck. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eight, A is a public hearing, to hear and receive input regarding a requested special use permit to allow for a food truck park located at 1009 South Jackson Street, Suite 200, City of Jackson. Mr. James, you want to...
Mayor, maybe I'll give you a briefing, and then you could ask if there's any public comments to be added.
That'd be great.
Alright, perfect. So this is for a special use permit on the property that we probably all formerly or know as the home of Super Gyo there on South Jackson. The applicant is T.R. Wilburn LLC, as authorized by Corinthian Real Estate Investments LLC. The underlying zoning district is currently K Industrial, and the applicant is seeking a special use permit for food truck park. The underlying zoning, the underlying zoning district would remain with the overlay of the SUP if awarded by council this evening. This did go before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their May 21, 2024 meeting. I'm not aware of any attendees or participants in the meeting, or any letters being received by the city in opposition or necessarily in support for this request. You see that we had one of our five commissioners absent from the meeting, but the other four did vote in support of this request. SUPs, as outlined in our ordinance, do always require a four-fifths vote by city council for approval as opposed to the standard simple majority of three to two votes. So it would require at least four votes in favor of this request. On the right side of the screen there, what you see is the three stars. This is the points on the property at which the food truck, as requested by the applicant and approved, or requested, recommended for approval by Planning and Zoning, could be located three different locations. But I'll be clear, one trailer, just three different locations at which it could be placed on the property. And you see there that they're looking at operations from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m., which complement, I believe, the Super Gyo, hours of operation for access to restrooms and things like that for the customers.
Very good. So I will open us up to our public hearing. This is a time where you can come and speak in favor of or against it. So if anyone would like to do that, our applicant is here, if you would like to speak, that's, this would be your time. Anybody for or against?
I'm for it, by the way.
Okay, good.
I just, first of all, I want to say that, let everyone know, I already had all my inspections done on everything from the city, the fire marshal, health department, everything's been approved on the trailer and everything, so we're good there. And then also wanted to let everyone know that my intentions right now is strictly serving out of the trailer. There's no cooking in it. So in the future, there may be some cooking, and if I ever do that, then I'll address any concerns then. But there will be no cooking until everything is 100% right and ready in order to be able to cook in it. So, and I'll answer any questions if y'all have any questions.
Need some help?
That I might. That I definitely might. So I definitely need to keep your number, so...
Thank you, Tony.
Thank y'all very much.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of or against? You're just scratching back there, correct? Okay, thank you. Alright, I will close the public hearing. Our next item will be to discuss and consider with possible action approval of the ordinance granting the requested special use permit. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion, questions anybody may have? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you, Tony. Item number nine is again another public hearing, to hear and receive input regarding a requested zone change from J Wholesale Warehouse and Manufacturing to C Multi-Family Low Density on the southwest corner of an intersection of O'Keefe and Dogwood Street, described as 3.78 acres of track 19, block 2415 of the Jose Panita Survey, property ID 107147000. Give us a little briefing there.
Yes, Mayor, thank you for opening the public hearing. The applicant is One Tribe Properties, based out of Jacksonville, Texas. They do have several representatives here. We've had a couple of different meetings at different staff levels with the applicant about this project and utilities, and just the benefits that it could bring to the community should it be approved by the council this evening. They're seeking to go from J Wholesale Warehouse and Manufacturing to C Multi-Family Low Density, which does allow up to 10 living units per acre. And the portion of the property that they're looking to rezone is approximately 3.78 acres, and you see it there outlined on the screen. It's currently part of a larger structure, a larger parcel, excuse me. This property was also considered at the May 21, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and it also received four votes in support of the project with one member being absent. You see there how it kind of lays in there between G Commercial and then some residential zoning districts to its east. I would consider this kind of a good transitional use between existing commercially zoned property and commercially, property that's used in a commercial form to provide some kind of buffer between it and the residentially zoned and utilized properties to its east.
Good. So hearing that, our public hearing will still be open. Does anyone want to come and speak in favor of or against? I know the applicants are here, if you would like to say anything, if that's okay? Anyone want to speak in favor of?
He said everything he needs to say.
Okay, alright. Hearing, hearing and seeing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing, and we'll go to item B to discuss and consider with possible action approval of an ordinance granting the requested zone change. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the zone change as described on track 19, block 2415 of the Jose Panita Survey.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen. Second. Second by Councilman Tim McGray. Any discussion?
And, I mean, the same type of construction that we're going to see here as we see right across from Bullard High School. So, perfect.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you, Shane.
Yeah, thank you.
Item 10, we have, is any action out of executive session? We do not have any, so we'll go to item number 11. Consider all matters incident and related to approving and authorizing publication and posting of a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, appreciate this item being on your agenda after a discussion on Thursday at the workshop. This is a non-binding action tonight. This is just notice of intent. There'll be several subsequent steps for the public to be involved and for your consideration for more details to come forward. But we are looking to provide notice of the intent to issue certificates of obligation or debt to fund the purchase of a new fire engine and ladder truck, along with providing approximately an additional $1 million of funding for public safety and public infrastructure enhancements. The city's tax rate is comprised of really two different elements, an M&amp;O, maintenance and operations, and an INS for interest and sinking fund. And our process and our kind of philosophy throughout the years has been to keep that INS rate stable. We do have some debt rolling off coming into this new budget year, and this debt issuance could basically fill what's falling off to maintain stability within, with that, and really having no impact to your total tax rate. The issuance of this debt would yield about $4.1 million to the city. About $3.1 million of that would be allocated toward the equipment purchases predicated on future action here on item 12 on your agenda this evening. And again, that would leave that about $1 million that could be utilized as the council directed for other public and safety elements or public infrastructure enhancements.
So I will entertain a motion, and then we'll have a roll call, correct?
That'd be correct, sir.
So I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we consider all matters incident and related to approving and authorizing publication and posting of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen to approve.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Mindy Galluck. So we'll need a roll call vote on this. So Councilman Rob Goen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Mayor Randy Goen, yes. Councilwoman Latitia Horace?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mindy Galluck?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a 5-0 roll call vote on that item. Thank you. Item number 12 is to consider, discuss and consider with possible action authorizing the purchase of a new fire engine and ladder truck. Mr. James.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, Thursday, Chief Finley did a great job walking you through a vehicle replacement proposal for your consideration. I do want to take just a moment to thank his apparatus and equipment committee. Chief Finley's been with us about six months. He stood up several different committees internal to his department, making sure he had a good mix of orange hats, which are our brand-new firefighters in training, as well as our senior command staff to really cross-pollinate that information and all that experience. And so you see the names of a couple of our captains serving on that, and then a couple of our more junior firefighters there on the screen this evening. But these men have been instrumental in assessing the different equipment, the different vendors, and making sure that we get what we need to provide for superior public safety services here in the city of Jacksonville. With that, Chief Finley laid out a proposal to purchase a new fire engine, which we would take delivery of as early as this August at a cost of just right at $1 million. He did say that this would replace a 2013 Pierce Sabre Pumper unit, which is really kind of at the end of its frontline service life. What he laid out for the council on Thursday was that we could expect this type of equipment to have a 10-year frontline service life with a five-year in a reserve status. Currently, again, as Chief Finley laid out, we only have two engines, one at Station 1, or at 911 South Bolton, and one at Station 2 on the loop. We don't have the benefit of a reserve unit at this time. So when we have minor maintenance needs, it's difficult to balance those with taking a fire engine out of service. With this planned proposal, we would take delivery of this new fire engine, again, as early as this August or September of 2024. Engine 1, the current engine 1, would then go off for some needed maintenance and then be put into a reserve status, helping us balance out mileage and maintenance on the three engines that we would then have at that time. He also laid out a plan to purchase a new ladder truck to replace a unit that's from 2007 for just at $2.1 million. If we fully prepay, and we're weighing that with our financial advisor right now, whether we take some of these CO proceeds and put them into our own investment portfolio, or if we prepay for this upfront and get about a $200,000 savings upfront off of that, bringing it closer to the $1.9 million cost. We wouldn't, this is the interesting part here, we wouldn't take delivery of this even if we prepaid all upfront for about three years. That's the lead time on equipment these days, so that's why you have to get ahead of having problems. But our ladders from 2007, it started to have some significant maintenance concerns, taking it out of service. And it's a critical piece of equipment with larger commercial structures, high-rise apartments, and some of the things we've seen built and developed here in Jacksonville recently. On a more specialized piece of equipment that's not rolled as frequently, we would expect a service life of 15 years.
You've heard that explanation. I will entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the two purchases of a fire engine and a ladder truck.
Have a motion by Councilman Tim McGray.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any discussion?
I'd just like to make a point, the ladder trucks are also very valuable in warehouse fires, which we do have an awful lot of industrial and all that. And there's some of those, that we've had those in the past, that you can't get to without a ladder.
Right. And I think you were absent Thursday, and I think it's been in the shop for 90 days.
Yeah, so if we had a problem at one of our, it would be detrimental.
Right. Any other discussion, comment? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 13 is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding a contract for the construction of the Boating Access Grant Project.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I did get the number wrong earlier, it was 13, my apologies. We did have a bid opening for this project on May 30. We received one bid from CE Marler and Associates Incorporated for what we call the Boating Access Grant Project there at the concession side of the lake, which includes new fueling and mooring piers and docks, a new double concrete boat launch, as well as a new restroom facility and some dedicated parking for boats and trailers, as well as passenger vehicles. Unfortunately, the project, having only received one bid, it's very difficult to see if you're getting good value, good bang for your buck, so to speak, and it coming in at $3.04 million with a project estimate of closer to $1.66 million. The design engineer has recommended that we reject that bid and rebid the project. They've had some good discussions with other qualified contractors since having the bid opening, and it is within our right to reject all bids and rebid the project. They're rebidding the project with just some slight modification. They're rebidding the project with just some slight modifications to what's in the base bid and what's in the alternate package. But we're very hopeful that we'll be able to continue to fund all the elements as originally designed. They have a targeted schedule recommended to us to advertise for two weeks in June with a bid opening being conducted here at City Hall on July first. And then that would be on the council's July agenda for consideration. Again, we're hoping to come in much closer to the one point six six million dollar mark, and we feel like that's reasonable.
So I'll entertain a motion on that item.
I'll make a motion that we reject the bid and begin rebidding the project.
I have a motion to reject the bid by Councilman Rob Gowan.
Second.
Second by Councilman Latitia Horace. Any discussion?
Hope we don't disappoint you, sir.
We're working hard not to.
Exactly.
And just, this is a note, just so we, we'll all remember, we did start this probably five years ago. But it has been held up not because of our, not taking care of our business. It's been held up by the Parks and Wildlife. They had to look for artifacts. They thought there was some.
There are heads out there.
There was one Indian chief that had to sign off on the whole deal.
And then we lost it.
We couldn't find him.
Right, and then in the middle of it, the coordinator that we were working with retired, so we had to reinvent the wheel, so. We, we've really tried hard, but we thought we had it across the finish line until only one hung, guy that had plenty of work apparently bid, so. We think we'll get it done, so.
We're closer than ever.
We're closer than ever. So we have a, a motion is second, so all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Uh, item number fourteen is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution nominating a new board member to the Cherokee County Department.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, I didn't make a slide for this particular item. But generally speaking, if we're filling the terms on the standard, standardized kind of schedule and not a mid, midterm vacancy, the council has awarded a certain number of ballots to cast based on our tax roll value. And so we cast those ballots in conjunction with our partners like G I S D and all the different counties or all the different cities, excuse me, and school districts in Cherokee County. This is a mid-year vacancy. Mr. Jim Tarrant had a voluntary resignation effective May sixteenth of this year. And so Jan Lowry down there at the appraisal district has asked the council basically to nominate a name, and this is laid out in their formal process. You would nominate a name this evening, and then the existing board members would just personally vote on that to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Jim Tarrant, which goes through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Standardized term is two years, so this is about, gonna result in probably about eighteen months of those twenty-four months being filled. Again, you're just nominating a name. Every, every entity, every taxing entity has the ability to do the same. And then the board themselves are expected to take action at their July eighteenth meeting, should they have a quorum.
So our duty is to nominate a name.
That's correct, but you won't, you won't cast any ballots beyond nomination.
Place a name in front of their board. So does anybody have a name that they would like to?
John Hargit came to mind.
Okay.
And I've spoken to John, and he'd love the opportunity.
Okay.
He'd be good.
Yeah, I think he would be. Anybody else have a name? I called two or three that I thought might be good, and they all declined, so.
Respectfully.
Respectfully declined.
Respectfully declined.
Can you talk to John?
I did, yeah. Something about Plexiglas windows on his lake house, he'll be fine.
Okay, so he was excited and kind of wanted to do it.
Yeah, looking forward to the opportunity.
Okay, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to place his name as our nominee. Yep, so someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we nominate John Hargit as our nominee for the Cherokee County Appraisal Board.
Okay, have a motion by Councilman Rob Gowan.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Tim McGray. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Open forum for mayor and council. Anybody have anything they want to talk about in public?
Glad to be home.
Glad to be home. All right, next item.
I'm following up on the lake, and, I mean, you can't legislate cleanliness and that type thing, and I get that and I know that. And, I mean, are there ways for us to?
Police have legal activity.
Well, I mean, you can, but.
It's in the city limits.
Yeah, I mean, we did that. The whole.
I heard, I heard reckless driving, I heard drug deals, I heard, all that can be police.
Right, right, but, I mean. What's our current, I know chief loves it when the council goes, yeah, we'll police it.
Well, I mean, but it is, it's inside the city limits. I mean, we have a responsibility.
At one point in time, though, we, and one of, I think Tanner Chandler comes to mind that, you know, we had, we kind of had an attendant out there in the park during kind of peak time, peak hours, and I think, I mean, the purpose at that point was selling fuel. Was, yeah, it was pumping gas and selling fuel, but, you know, we have, we have sent a new group of people over there and closing the other half, so maybe it's up to us to, you know, I don't know what we have available with, with the person that we have at the campgrounds of, you know, that type of deal, and. I mean, it's all money, but.
I think we'll be working on some proactive.
Right, and then the other, the other, particularly with Kirk Sadler and, you know, people like that live in there on that straightaway, the other complaint that I've heard several times lately is just the cars and speeding and traffic and that kind of stuff, and.
Those are policing actions. They're against the law, so.
Well, yeah.
It's outside the city limits. We have a responsibility there.
Yeah, hopefully we'll see some, some more diligence out there to try to curb that. It's a gym that we own, and we gotta take care of it.
Right, right. It is.
Anybody else? All right, city manager?
Just a couple of things, Mayor, City Council. Probably now more than ever the yard waste pickup, which is the second and fourth Wednesdays. That's a free opportunity for our citizens to get out up to ten bags of yard waste and limbs that are bundled in four-foot lengths. After the storm, this will be a great program for those folks, especially those not signed up for the bulky subscription service or not looking to make a one-time special pickup request. This is a good way to rid your yards of some limbs. Keep in mind, you know, we have limited staff, we have one truck that goes around and does this, and if you're paying contractors, commercial contractors to do tree work for you, they need to remove the trees as part of their service. We certainly cannot fill that void, but I've been seeing this be successful as neighbors adjacent to me have put out bundles of sticks and twigs and even, you know, more branch-like pieces of trees. And so definitely encourage people to take advantage of that. If you don't want to wait till the second or fourth and you want to pay, or if you have the subscription service, you can just email bulky at Jacksonville TX dot org to set up your appointment for that. Also, we recently rolled out opportunities to rent our pool for parties as well as swim lessons. We had done that in the past, but I think it had been at least probably up to five years since we had offered swim lessons at the pool at Buckner Park. So we're offering several different sessions there, as you can see on the screen, and you can learn more by going to our standard website address forward slash swim. There's an X there intentionally, 'cause one of the sessions is already full. I think we have over forty students signed up to date, but they're very affordable as compared to privately offered swim lessons, and I commend our team for putting that offering together for the community. There'll be a flag day ceremony and community picnic held at Hazel Tilton Park, which is just west of City Hall here on Friday, June fourteenth, which is Flag Day. This is supported by our city, but this is really, all the heavy lifting and coordination is done by Dr. Deborah Burkett. We thank her for all those efforts. I believe Senator Nichols will be in attendance. It's a generally just a really lovely event, very just hometown Americana. They're expecting over a hundred in attendance. I think there's gonna be free food and ice cream as well, but that'll be this Friday, June fourteenth at eleven A.M. And then I did want to let everybody know and wish Daniel farewell. He's accepted a position with the city of Taylor down closer to the Austin area, and I think his last day with the city is next week on the eighteenth, so he'll be making a move with his bride and, and new son down there. And we, again, we just wish him well and thank him for everything he did for our city, and big shoes to fill there. That's it.
Yeah, okay. Well, if there's nothing else, we'll stand adjourned at six thirty-nine. Thank you for your participation.